Our sixth meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Prior to the start of our council meetings, we have an opportunity for citizens to address the Eden Prairie City Council on issues related to Eden Prairie city business. Typically, our meetings are the first and third Tuesdays of each month, and the portion of open podium time is just prior to the start of council meetings, generally from 6:30 to 6:55 in these council chambers. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at (949) 8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and the item that you wish to discuss. If time permits after scheduled speakers, there's an opportunity for unscheduled speakers to appear before us. This portion of the meeting is not televised, it is not recorded. Again, if you have any questions about this, please contact the city manager's office. Is there -- well, before we get on to anything else.
I'm on road.
Yeah, I am on road. Okay, first, we've got to swear in our continuing mayor and continuing council members. So, Mr. Getchow?
I will turn things over to the city attorney.
I'll give you the oath, so you can follow along and repeat it after me, please. I Nancy Terrell-Lukens.
I Nancy Terrell-Lukens.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties of the office of mayor.
And faithfully discharge the duties of the office of mayor.
Of the city of Eden Prairie.
Of the city of Eden Prairie.
In the county of Hanipen.
In the county of Hanipen.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Your guest choice.
Thank you.
And so next, Kathy. You raise your right hand. I Kathy Nelson.
I Kathy Nelson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of city council member.
Of the office of city council member.
Of the city of Eden Prairie.
Of the city of Eden Prairie.
And the county of Hanipen.
And the county of Hanipen.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you. After me, I Sherri Goocher-Woodstrom.
I Sherri Goocher-Woodstrom.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of council member of the city of Eden Prairie.
Of the office of council member of the city of Eden Prairie.
And the county of Hanipen.
And the county of Hanipen.
And state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Now that we're all properly sworn in, we can get on with city business and things that require votes. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda and other items of business?
So moved.
Any items to add or pull from the agenda?
Just to add one item for council member reports regarding the Eden Prairie Fire Relief Association.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, all in favor of the agenda as amended? Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of the council workshop held on Tuesday, December 2nd?
Second.
Any items to correct in those minutes? Hearing done? All in favor? Aye.
Obey.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval of the council meeting minutes held from that same date?
So move.
Any corrections to those? All in favor? Aye.
Obey.
Thank you. Consent calendar, we have items A through M on the consent calendar. Are there any items to pull? Okay, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. The motion passes. Brings us to our public hearing, which is a cable franchise transfer. Mr. Getchow?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, the city of Eden Prairie is a member of the Southwest Suburban Cable Commission along with the cities of Edina, Hopkins, Minnetonka, and Richfield. And you also may recall that within the past two years, we recently renewed our cable franchise agreement that the commission and those member cities have with Comcast. Recently, it was -- came to the commission and now to each city, a request to transfer the authority of that franchise agreement over to a new cable operator called Great Land Connections. So we have with us tonight are the attorney from our commission, Brian Grogan, who's going to provide a pretty detailed presentation to the city council regarding this proposed transfer. We will then have a public hearing to consider, comment on that, and then we ask that you adopt a resolution approving that transfer, but the staff of the commission, Mr. Grogan, is here to answer any questions that you or the public may have regarding this issue. So with that, I can turn it over to Mr. Grogan.
Thank you, mayors, members of the council. For the record, my name is Brian Grogan. I'm an attorney at the Minneapolis Law Firm of Moss and Barnett, here tonight representing the Southwest Commission as Mr. Getchow has just mentioned. I apologize for having to sit down for this presentation, but I had a little procedure on my foot, and the city was kind enough to allow me to do that. Should I move closer?
Brian, if you could, yeah.
Very good. Do I need to repeat my introduction, or are we okay?
No.
Very good. So I'm going to jump right into it, because it's a fairly lengthy presentation, but I'm going to try to hit the high notes for us this evening. This began last February when Comcast decided to acquire all of the cable subscribers and assets of Time Warner Cable. So directing your attention to the PowerPoint, with this acquisition, it would make Comcast -- they're already the largest cable operator in the country, but they would assume the eleven and a half million customers of Time Warner, creating a 34 million subscriber system throughout the United States. There's a somewhat unwritten rule at the federal level that if you exceed 30 million customers in this industry, they have significant antitrust concerns. Knowing that, Comcast voluntarily agreed to divest itself of four million customers to get within that 30 million threshold. So they put those out for sale, and in a moment, I'm going to describe how that transaction played out. The Twin Cities market was part of that four million subscriber divestiture. But sometimes a picture is worth a thousand words, and if you look at this slide, the blue represents Comcast's current holdings around the country, and you can see the Twin Cities marketplace. That represents all of Comcast's properties in Minnesota, most of the metro area and then a little bit down in the southwestern portion of the state. And you can see the synergies that are created by this merger from Comcast and Time Warner's perspective. Comcast will run from Seattle all the way through California, Texas, and then virtually the entire eastern seaboard. This slide is intended to provide some information about the other cable operators, and I want to focus on Minnesota here. We see the blue that represents Comcast holdings. The green represents Charter Communications. And Charter is going to be a name you're going to hear a lot in the next five or 10 minutes during this presentation. They are largely going to be the operator that will handle the day-to-day operations of the cable franchise here in Eden Prairie, and really will be interacting with your constituents on a regular basis. So despite the fact that we're going to hear the name Great Land Connections, Charter is really a company we need to focus on in this presentation. So how does Charter get into this? Well, Charter acquired one and a half million of those four million customers that I described a moment ago, and then they agreed to swap a bunch of other subscribers with Charter, or excuse me, with Comcast, so that these cities, these companies could create synergies. Comcast wanted all of Los Angeles. Charter wanted all of St. Louis. And so they started swapping customers to give themselves regional clusters. In the perfect world, Charter would have acquired all four million customers, and we'd be sitting here tonight talking about a straight transfer to Charter. But for a variety of reasons, they weren't able to accomplish that. Most of them relate to the financial mandates of trying to acquire four million subscribers. It's quite costly. So they only were able to purchase a million and a half. And that's where this interim company comes in. But let me just pause for a minute and give you a little overview of what Charter Communications does here in the state of Minnesota. They operate quite a few major cities, from Duluth, St. Cloud, Rochester, Winona, and a number of other cities in between. Virtually all the major markets outside of the metro area, Charter operates. They have six million customers nationwide in 29 states, and they are a Fortune 500 company. If this transaction closes, Charter will be operationally handling 10 million customers, as opposed to the six million that they handle today. So keep that in mind as we start talking about customer service and other issues that are going to potentially affect Eden Prairie constituents. So now we move to the company that is going to in name legally hold the cable franchise in Eden Prairie if this transaction's approved. They started out being known as Spinco. They changed their name to Midwest Cable, which is the name that it sits as today. Mr. Getchow mentioned that in the end, they're going to be known as Great Land Connections, and that will occur assuming this transaction closes sometime in late first quarter of 2015. But for tonight's purposes, I'm going to refer to them as Midwest Cable, because that's their legal name as they sit today. So this would be a two and a half million subscriber system. The day they begin operations, they would likely be a Fortune 500 company. That's how big this company will be. But they don't have any current operational holdings. So if you asked me, Brian, did you check on where they operate franchises today and how they have complied? Did you call those cities and see how they've met their franchise obligations? The answer is no, because they don't hold anything today. They are literally a brand-new company. No operational experience that I can refer to. They did hire an experienced executive team that I'll mention in a moment, but that makes the review of this company quite challenging, because we're looking purely at pro forma projections. We can't look at any historical performance. Assuming this transaction closes, and that will require federal approval, so the FCC will have to ultimately approve this deal, that's expected to be in approximately the March time period of this year, then this transaction will go forward as planned. And they will rename themselves Great Land Connections. Part of the reason they can't stay Midwest Cable is part of their holdings will be all the way down in Alabama, and I presented to the Alabama City Attorneys Group, and they were none too pleased to have a cable operator coming to their state called Midwest Cable. They view themselves as something other than Midwest, apparently, so a name change was required, I think. But ultimately, the review that we're going to conduct will have to be the legal, technical, and financial qualifications of Midwest Cable. This chart gives you a little bit of a view of what Charter currently holds in the United States and what these orange dots represent, if you can see it. I know it's a difficult map to read, but you'll see the main orange dot where the Twin Cities market is, and the other orange dots represent what Midwest Cable would be acquiring. All those blue dots are what Charter already holds. So you can see there's some synergy here between where Charter has operations around the country and where they'll be handling operations for Midwest Cable. All right, so who is Midwest Cable? They're going to be run by a board of directors. It's going to be one-third owned by Charter, two-thirds owned by Comcast shareholders, not by Comcast itself. So Comcast is basically going to be giving its shareholders some stock in this company as part of this transaction. That makes Comcast very motivated to see this company succeed, because their own shareholders will be owning two-thirds of this company. They're going to have nine board members. It's going to be run by a gentleman named Michael Willner. He was a longtime, 40-year veteran of the cable industry. He ran a company called Insight Communications down in Indiana and Illinois, and he's virtually brought his whole executive team from Insight, a company that they sold a few years back, to come out and run this Midwest Cable. But in terms of employees, that is largely the expertise that they have on paper right now, is that executive team. They don't have any other employees until this transaction closes. So again, no operating history to look at. This is a little bit of a structure of what this transaction looks like. I think I verbally described that, but it gives you a picture and a visualization of how the actual merger will occur. From a timeline perspective, we got this deal back in June. We usually have 120 days as a city to take action on this, but because of the complexity of this deal and the fact that the company needed a little more time to figure out exactly the role that Charter Communications would play, they extended the deadline. The current deadline is extended until January 15th. If we don't reach a decision tonight, we will achieve a further extension of time periods, so I don't want the council to feel backed into a corner here this evening. I've already achieved other extensions for other cities that weren't able to meet prior to this deadline. So let's talk now about the actual field operations and what it's going to look like here in Eden Prairie. Local field technical personnel, the folks that drive the trucks in and around your streets will actually be Midwest Cable or Great Land employees. They will retain that local technical expertise. They'll also retain their local government affairs staff. So the folks that regularly interact with the commission and with your city manager's office, those people will also be retained. That's it. Everybody else will no longer be employed by the company. So when you talk about customer service operations around the country that Comcast has in place, those will not be at the disposal of Midwest Cable long-term. And that's the reason they're entered in -- they've entered into what's called a services agreement, or they call it a charter services agreement, for Charter to handle most of these operations. Now, this sounds unduly confusing. It is confusing. I've been doing this for 25 years, and I've not quite seen a deal structured in this way where you have so much of the operational requirements delegated to another party that doesn't actually hold the franchise. Here's the things that Charter will do for this city and for the residents in your community. Programming will all be Charter's programming. So today, we know that the Comcast program is known as Xfinity. For those of you who have the package, you have the Xfinity branding, and you have Xfinity on the go. You'll now have Spectrum programming, which is the brand name that Charter applies to its suite of programming offerings. Those programming offerings will be similar, but not identical. So you will have differences. Some of the packages will look different. There will be a transition that has to occur on that. All of the programming agreements with the ESPNs and the Big Ten networks are all negotiated by Charter. Midwest Cable won't actually have any programming agreements itself. It'll be dependent on Charter's agreements for the programming rights. Everything backstream, everything behind the scenes in terms of IT, technical, making the phone system work, all of that will be handled by Charter, because they have the existing in-house expertise to handle it. Voice operations for the telephone system, customer service, will all be handled by Charter. Now, there has been some recent discussions by Midwest Cable where they feel they may need to actually acquire a call center of their own, so that they have some control over call volume. They haven't committed to that yet, but there is some discussion about that. Billing, marketing, sales, all will be handled by Charter. For that, Charter will be paid four and a quarter percent of every dollar that Midwest Cable makes, and in addition, they'll have to pay actual costs. So they get four and a quarter percent right off the top of every dollar made, and then Midwest Cable will be paying in addition for those services, which is a concern, because it puts additional pressure on their debt maintenance, which is a topic I'm going to talk about here shortly, and I'm going to try to keep moving as fast as I can. So let's talk about the tangible impact for the customers and for those in the audience tonight. If you're a Comcast customer and you have their telephone product, you will continue to get to keep their phone number. So that phone number, in Minnesota, we have something called number portability. When you switch call carriers, you can keep your phone number. That's the good news. You'll also be able to keep your equipment in your home. If you have the Xfinity equipment, it is compatible with the new system, so for at least the foreseeable future, you won't need to trade out all of your modems, all of your cable equipment, remote controls, et cetera. Email is not as good news. If you have a Comcast.net email account currently, whether for your personal use or for your business use, that will transition over the next year. They haven't specified exactly the date of transition, because they don't know exactly the date of closing, but it will likely transition to a new domain name in most -- the most anticipated name would be Charter.com. It most likely would be that. And the theory would be that, you know, Charter is going to be so integrally involved in the operations of this, it's certainly not going to be surprising that three years out, Charter may not ultimately acquire this system in its entirety, this 2.5 million customers. They're prohibited from doing that for the first three years, but after that, certainly have the option. So if you're thinking about it long-term, it would make sense to migrate folks to their email domain, so there wouldn't have to be another disruption. All billing will be handled by Great Land, Midwest, so that you, if you're writing checks to Comcast today, you'll have to start making out the checks to a new entity, which is not a significant issue. If you're like me, I'm a resident of the Twin Cities, and I have Comcast, and I do automatic withdrawal from my bank account to just pay that bill every month, I'll have to contact my bank and reallocate that to a new entity, because I'll no longer be remitting that automatic payment to Comcast. All of these, as you can tell, are going to require touches with the customer. In other words, there's going to be interaction that's going to have to occur that typically wouldn't. That is going to increase call volume, and is going to increase the amount of complaints likely to come out of this transaction, and that's going to be something that I'm going to address in the resolution that I'm proposing that you take action on. Financial review is a complicated issue for this company. Brand-new company, acquiring a lot of debt with this services agreement that is going to make it more expensive for them to operate the system. There's about eight pages in the report on this topic, and I'm not going to try to summarize it all for you here. It is, I think, relevant, though, to note that on EBITDA, which is earnings before interest, taxes, depreciation, and amortization, a key measure of financial viability, that this company, when they close the transaction, will have an EBITDA consistent with other operators in the market. And I've listed some of those here. That's described in greater detail in the report. It would not be fair to compare them to Comcast's financial situation. Comcast is probably the most financially stable company in the communications industry. They have a very low debt-to-equity ratio, and they're just a very solid company across the board. So comparing them against Comcast, they don't look as solid. Comparing them, though, to other similar peer group cable operators, they actually come out right in the mix in terms of their financial leverage. So the document that's before you tonight is a resolution that the commission unanimously recommended approval of, and that resolution ultimately has to be approved by each of the five member cities. All four of the other cities of the commission have actually all met. Minnetonka was the last one last night, and I was at that meeting. They have all approved it. Eden Prairie is the last of the Southwest commission members to consider it. Let me describe what we've included. First of all, for financial performance, we've required a guarantee from the parent company to make sure that the performance of the operating entity here in Eden Prairie is guaranteed by the parent, so the whole two and a half million subscriber system would have to fail before they would renig on their financial obligations here in the operations in Eden Prairie. We've included a number of commitments to verify issues that Comcast committed to in the franchise that this council approved two years ago. Some of you may be aware that we recently renewed Comcast franchise about two years ago, and it included a number of obligations. This transfer allowed us to look back at those, and any area where there was any ambiguity, we tried to button up as part of this resolution to make it crystal clear that the new company coming in won't impose any new financial burdens on the city or on the commission. With respect to customer service issues, a topic I talked about earlier, we've required that the company come in and meet with the city's staff and/or with the commission's staff each quarter for the next two years to help with this transition that they're going to be going through, and what we anticipate will be the challenges in trying to meet the customer demand. We've also required that the new company maintain an escalated complaint system, which would allow Mr. Getchow and his staff, that if they gets complaints from Eden Prairie residents, rather than pushing them back into the standard 1-800 number, they can have an escalated team dedicated at the cable operator to handle those complaints, and that will allow then his staff to follow up and verify that these complaints have been handled appropriately. Then those would be followed up again at these quarterly meetings. Lastly, a condition of your approval tonight would be that all of the costs that were incurred by the commission or by the city to review this transfer and ultimately take action on it would be fully reimbursed by the cable operators. So this would result in a neutral financial review for the commission and for the city. So with that, I think I've basically covered these conclusionary items. Our recommendation is for the city council to approve this resolution, which would approve the transfer. By approving the resolution, you're also approving the guarantee, which is attached as an exhibit to the resolution. With that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Really thorough presentation, but you did have to go through it quickly, and it is very complex. I think for residents, the ultimate question is, what kind of service will they be getting? What is the impact on the subscription costs for this new service? Can you address that a little bit? Because it's one thing to say, you know, it's going to be the same price, but are you getting the same amount? Are you getting less? Less channels? Less service?
And that, you know, the condition that if we were talking about this 15 years ago, one of the conditions we would have in this resolution would be a requirement that rates be held steady for a year, two years, or that there be a limitation on what the increase could be, so that any debt that the company acquired wouldn't put undue pressure on the rates. In today's world, we don't have that rate regulation authority under federal law, so we cannot impose that kind of a condition. So it would be easy for me. And remember, I represent, in essence, the city in this case, because as a member of the commission, you are my client. I would love to be able to represent to you that companies will not increase rates as a result of this. But I can't mandate that they won't do that, and they certainly aren't committing that they won't do that. So unfortunately, we're stuck with the prospect that they're going to be governed by market forces, and if the market justifies, or they think they can justify an increase, they certainly have the legal right to do that. To that point, though, Mayor, I think it may be relevant this evening to bring up the fact that the city has been approached by another company interested in obtaining a cable franchise, something that hasn't happened in nearly 15 years, and that's CenturyLink. CenturyLink is pursuing cable franchises around the Twin Cities area, and they have approached the commission, and I've already been working with Manager Getchow to conduct meetings and to review that. So the commission is very much open and encouraging for competition to come to these cities, so that the marketplace has the ability then to govern rates through market competition as opposed to government regulation. So that is one factor that we're hopeful that the CenturyLink will ultimately be able to obtain a franchise. That helps to alleviate the question that you just asked.
Okay, so right now, there isn't really an alternative to this?
Other than a satellite provider or certain over-the-top providers, but a true wireline competitor, we have one choice in town right now.
Okay. And they will be able to offer the same high-speed internet connections that Comcast did?
Yeah, in fact, they'll be taking over all of the assets. So operationally, there shouldn't be any change in what they're technically able to provide. How they price it and how they package it, though, is at their discretion.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, I have one question about the internet, too, but you've just asked it. But how do we know that we'll get the same service as Charter customers and not second-class service from them? You know, they'll get around to it after they've done their own, since we are, you know, we're not going to be Charter. We're going to be a part of this Midland, Midwest Cable slash Great Land connection that's, you know, going in for service. So how do we know that we don't get the last on the list to get our cable fixed?
Well, I think I would answer that two ways. In some ways, that question's probably best directed to the company, but let me try to answer it based on everything I've studied here. First of all, Charter owns a third of Midwest Cable. So their, you know, their own financial performance is going to be, in a way, dictated by the performance of Midwest Cable. They have a vested interest in making sure that they don't lose subscribers and that the ultimate performance isn't compromised. Midwest Cable is still ultimately the legal entity that would hold the franchise. They have a service agreement with Charter. If Charter fails to perform, they have enforcement metrics in that agreement that would allow Midwest Cable to move on to a different third-party vendor or to enforce damages against Charter for failure to perform. So I think, in a way, it will actually mandate that Charter provide high-quality service for both of those reasons. You know, I think the other issue is, to the extent Charter is ultimately trying to position themselves to acquire these systems, they have every interest in the world in seeing subscriber numbers stay high and loyalty from those subscribers, because they're ultimately seeing subscriber numbers stay high and loyalty from those subscribers, because they're ultimately, I think, interested in acquiring all of these. Now, they haven't stated that publicly, but if you read the Wall Street analysts, that's the expectation is that the reason this services agreement is being structured this way is it's a natural fit for them to ultimately acquire ownership of the system.
What happens if this new company, Greatland Connections, that is owned by, you know, the stock is owned out there and such, and they have some background in it? Not every new company makes it. What happens if this one doesn't make it? What happens to our service if all of a sudden they're out of the business? I assume it's sold to somebody else, but we don't have any control over that, I take it?
Well, they certainly would have the right to sell the system if they were unable to perform or if they were running into financial trouble. The, you know, ultimately, this is a valuable asset. The Twin Cities market will be among the top markets that Midwest Cable owns, next to Detroit and the Michigan areas. This will be 550,000 customers clustered in the Twin Cities area with some pretty darn good demographics backing up the systems that they're operating. They have, you know, I believe this will be a high priority for that company, but if they were to fail, we have certain enforcement tools within our franchise. We have $100,000 performance bond, we have a $20,000 letter of credit, and then we ultimately have the ability to hold them in material breach and potentially terminate their franchise if they fail to perform. And we have some strong customer service metrics as well. But if they ultimately, in the scenario you describe, simply don't have the financial wherewithal to perform, they probably have two options, which would be to either sell the system or to abandon it. And honestly, in my 25 years, I haven't seen a system abandoned. It is almost always sold, and then we would be subject to reviewing the next entity that they would bring in to see if they have the requisite qualifications.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Case?
This is probably making some of us up on the council and people out in the audience a little nervous, and I guess I want to add to that, that as a commissioner hearing about this, I think we were somewhat worried. I just want to say a couple things, that one, to the extent that Mr. Rogan was able to give us the information that is available, that this was vetted by our commission well. And in spite of the fact that I'm nervous about Comcast hardware, Charter customer service, Greatland representatives, Greatland billing, I mean, that sounds like a somewhat of a nightmare, we don't have a lot of options. And to the extent that, as Mr. Rogan said, it's unlikely that this incredible, rich market would just be allowed to go away and just collapse, something would happen. I mean, we would eventually have another cable company. But I guess what I want to ask you, Mr. Rogan, and this was asked at the commission meeting, so what if we, if just Eden Prairie is part of the commission that, you know, that includes Hopkins, Richfield, Minnetonka, Edina, but what if we said no tonight? What happens? Because that's not a pretty picture either, and I guess we need to hear that, but what happens if we were to decline this, which is it within our power to do that?
Absolutely. So let me answer that two ways. First of all, you're by no means bound by what the commission has recommended or what the other cities have done. I'll be in Bloomington in two weeks, and they'll take up the issue. You have independent authority to make this decision. So that's first of all. It doesn't matter what the commission's purely an advisory body to you. But I had this question come up in at least three different council meetings that I've presented at so far, and I think the scenario is not very attractive, but here's how I believe it would play out. Assuming the federal government ultimately gives approval of this transaction, right? There's two options that happen there. If they deny it, all of this is rendered moot. This whole approval process is meaningless. Assuming they approve it, the transaction will close almost immediately, which is always the way that happens. When the approvals are secured, they've had this deal pending for well over a year at that point, they will close it immediately before anything could possibly get in the way. At that point, Comcast will no longer have any employees in the marketplace. All of their employees will be shifted over to Greatland. They'll simply, they'll have a transition agreement in place, but they won't have any way to continue to operate this system. They would likely carve out any city that denied, and they would continue to hold them in paper as a legal entity. They would likely challenge the denial for whatever reason. They may choose to challenge it, but they believe that they have presented qualifications for their, you know, proposed new grantee, Greatland. What it would play out, then, is they would, in all likelihood, contract with Greatland and with Charter to operate the system in almost the exact same way that they're proposing right now until that litigation is solved or until that issue is resolved, but through settlement or through some other way. But they'd have no ability to continue to simply operate physical assets in Eden Prairie because they're commingled with the system that's being sold otherwise. So I don't think it stops the deal. I just think it creates a little bit further confusion. And the one question that I've asked is, I've tried to analyze this, and, you know, Councilmember Case is a commission member, long-serving commission member in the Southwest Commission. He challenged staff with these questions at the commission level and forced us to try to think through these issues. We're trying to figure out what's the end objective that we would achieve by that. If the objective is to undo the entire deal, it's not going to happen, in the sense it's a $50 billion deal that affects almost every major market in the United States. So, for all of those reasons, it appeared that the best viable option for the city was to try to obtain a resolution approving it with conditions instead of going down that denial path. Apologize for the lengthy answer, but that's the analysis, I think.
Okay, any other questions? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this cable transfer? Okay.
So I would move to adopt the resolution. I'd like to move to close the public hearing and to move to adopt the resolution approving the transfer of the cable franchise and change of control of the grantee. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Rogan.
Thanks, Mark.
Payment of claims? Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any items to question? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Case?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Tyra Lukens?
Aye.
Next, we have a series of appointments. This is our normal city business at our first January meeting. The first official item on this list is a resolution designating the official city newspaper. Mr. Getchow?
Mayor, quickly, maybe covering all these items. As you mentioned, these are all actions the council needs to take to designate certain items or certain people to certain commissions. So the first one is designating official newspaper, and then following that, as you go through each item, you could simply make a motion on the people that you would like to serve on the different boards and commissions and groups that the city has an affiliation with.
Okay. Does somebody want to make motion for the city newspaper?
Sure. I move to adopt the resolution designating the Eden Prairie News as the official city newspaper for the year 2015.
Is there a second?
Second. On the notes, though, it does say 2014, so we should update it.
Yes, right. It's a typo on the notes.
15, sorry.
It should be 15. And Sherry stated 15.
Yes, she read it correctly.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next is a resolution designating the official meeting dates, time, and place for the City of Eden Prairie council meetings in 2015 and appointing the acting mayor. And we went through the calendar at our workshop tonight. In the past, Councilmember Case has served as our acting mayor or vice mayor. I would love to see him continue if there's a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Item C is a resolution appointing commissioners to the Eden Prairie Housing and Redevelopment Authority. A motion, please.
I would move to adopt the resolution appointing city council members to serve as commissioners for the Eden Prairie Housing and Redevelopment Authority and appointing Mayor Nancy Tyra Lukens as chair, Rick Getchow as executive director, and Member, Councilmember Nelson as the secretary for the calendar year 2015.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The next item is a resolution appointing director and alternate director to the Suburban
Rate Authority for 2015. This is done annually. Is there a motion?
I move to adopt a resolution designating Public Works Director Robert Ellis as the director and Councilmember Ron Case as the alternate director to the Suburban Rate Authority.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Next item is appointing myself as delegate and council members as alternates to the National League of Cities.
I would move to approve appointment of the mayor as delegate and council members as alternates to the National League of Cities.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next item is related to appointments to the Municipal Legislative Commission.
Move to approve the appointment of the mayor to the Municipal Legislative Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next item is Southwest Cable Commission.
I would move to approve the appointment of Councilmember Nelson to the Southwest Cable Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Next item is appointment for the Eden Prairie Foundation Board.
I move to approve the appointment of Councilmember Case to the Eden Prairie Foundation.
I guess we should technically say Eden Prairie Community Foundation.
Community Foundation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Appointments to I-494 Corridor Commission.
I move to approve appointment of Councilmember Aho to the I-494 Corridor Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Appointment to City and School Facilities Use Task Force.
I move to appoint appointment of Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom to the City and School Facilities Use Task Force.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next item is appointment of an assistant weed inspector, because I am the weed inspector, so we need an assistant weed inspector.
I move to appoint Jeff Cordes as assistant weed inspector for the City of Eden Prairie.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Next is an item, appointing municipal representatives to the Fire Relief Association Board of Trustees. Is there a motion?
Move to adopt the resolution appointing Councilmember Ron Case to the Eden Prairie Fire Relief Association. And Sukhachiver. Excuse me. To the Eden Prairie Fire Relief Association.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Next is Southwest Transit Board Citizen Representative. And Councilmember Aho has been serving in that position since 2012.
Move to appoint Councilmember Aho to the Southwest Metro Transit Board as Eden Prairie Citizen Representative for the three-year term to end December 31, 2016.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, we have the Southwest LRT Community Advisory Committee and the Business Advisory Committee. Is there a motion?
I would move to appoint Sana Elsarr, Andrew Piper, Jeff Straight, and Charles Weber as Eden Prairie representatives to Southwest LRT Community Advisory Committee, and Mark Gustafson and Rick Wibelin as Eden Prairie representatives to the Business Advisory Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motions pass. All right, the next item is reports of council members. Councilmember Case, you had something you wanted to, oh, sorry.
Yes.
Just Mr. Getchow.
Go back quick, I was talking to the city attorney. Back on item B, you made a verbal motion to approve Councilmember Case as the acting mayor, but we'd like you also to take a vote on the resolution approving the calendar for the year.
Ah, okay.
And then I think you noted, Mayor, some of the changes, so you could just say the changes you made to a few of the meetings at the workshop, but just to vote to approve that resolution.
Good point, okay. Somebody make a motion approving the calendar as amended at tonight's meeting and...
Maybe just read the motion as this and just redo that one? Can we do that?
Can we do that?
Sure.
Okay. Does somebody want to make it? Kathy?
Move to adopt the resolution designating the official meeting dates, time, and place for the City of Eden Prairie Council in 2015.
You already did.
You already did, Ron, so that's fine.
I didn't know if you needed to redo the whole.
And appointing Councilmember Ron Case as the act, as the vice mayor.
Got it pointed twice.
Is there a second?
Vice, vice.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Okay, Councilmember Case, you had something to discuss.
Thank you, yeah. So I do serve on the Eden Prairie Fire Relief Association Board, and currently firefighters receive, based on years of service, a defined benefit-type retirement at the point that they become of certain age or vested. And we've been talking a lot in the last year or two about offering a lump sum alternative that has the advantage of removing some of the risk liability from the pension fund and yet still offering something that people might want, to take a $100,000 lump sum rather than waiting, say, 10 years and receiving so much per month. So if the number becomes attractive enough, people might be more interested in taking it. Different pension relief funds around the state have different alternatives already. Some are only lump sums, some, you know, are only defined benefit. So what, right now, we have a lump sum alternative that is currently by legislature capped at a certain amount, which the belief is is not attractive yet to have people be willing to take that. So the Fire Relief Association Board would like to have it legislatively introduced to have the option to raise that cap. Not that if that cap was ever raised, it would have to come back before the council, it'd have to come back before the relief board, but can't even look at it because the legislature needs to raise that cap. In order to have that bill introduced, a process seemingly would be to have this council come up with a motion that, a resolution of support requesting our legislators. We'd have to have, you know, someone in the House and someone in the Senate, you know, probably our own legislators, carry that bill. Whether or not it would be Eden Prairie-specific, and again, that's a legislative thing, it probably would only really pertain to us, and there's a complicated reason for that. We're one of the larger associations of pension funds, and so there are reasons for that. So what I'm asking, my ask tonight, I think, of the council would be to think about or direct staff to come back to our second meeting in January if, after investigation, they felt, and talking to Sukhachiver, who also serves on that, if they felt it was meaningful and okay in this process, is simply ask the legislature to raise it. And again, it would not be raising it. And so that's what I would like to have all of you think about and then ask tonight, it would come back then at our second meeting. At that point, Aaron, what's Aaron's last name? Casper? Thank you, Casper. Sorry, Aaron. Would come back, our firefighter of the year for 2014. Yeah. There, Aaron, I got you there. So he would come back and he would discuss with us, and also George would be available. And just if you want to, if George wants to nod wherever he is, but he is, has been in favor of this and supportive of this idea, and he would, of course, would give his expertise as well. But they would come back at our second meeting in January if, again, staff came up with verbiage that would simply be a resolution of support to ask the legislature to look at this, and then, again, down the road somewhere, who knows? Maybe never, but maybe within a year or two, come back and we would be looking then at raising that cap. Is that appropriate to have the...
Do we need any kind of a motion for that at this point?
I'm not, yeah, I think so.
Okay, let's go ahead.
Great, thanks.
More information is better. Thank you. Mr. Getchow, award contract for financial advisory services to Ellers and Associates?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I have two quick reports, action items here. The first is awarding a contract in the coming year for financial advisory services to Ellers and Associates. Recently, staff, city, the city sent out an RFP, proposals to different financial advisory firms across the metro area and actually nationwide, who provide services in the area of economic and housing development, redevelopment, debt issuance, tax increment financing, just a, you know, a variety of work that the city needs consultant assistance on in the area of finance and economic development. And we did interview four firms, and this is something, again, that we typically do with many of our consultants. In fact, you may recall, we've done that recently with auditing firms, and we will have a new auditing firm this year. And so we feel it's good to have a variety of consultants proposing to the city, being interviewed and working with the city. In this case, in these interviews, we felt that Ellers and Associates, who we've done some work with in the past, would be an excellent firm to be appointed and awarded the contract for all of our financial advisor services for the current time. the contract for all of our financial advisor services for the current time. We actually were splitting those services between a couple different firms this past year, but when the group covering housing and economic development, finance, and myself came together, we felt that Ellers could provide all those services that are necessary. They have a breadth and depth of experience in all those areas and an excellent staff. So you saw in the packet with the agreement the services that they'll provide. And actually, with us tonight, who would be our financial advisor, Mark Ruff is here from Ellers, to introduce himself and to maybe answer any questions you would have and of, or staff, or Mark, before we ask that you take action on awarding this contract.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Mark Ruff with Ellers. First, I just want to say that we're very grateful for this opportunity to work with the city, and then we're just thrilled with the opportunities that are in front of you. And our mission as an organization is really to help you as a local government fulfill your goals, and we're going to work as hard as we can to help you fulfill those goals. Just a little brief background on Ellers. The firm is entering its 60th year. It was started by a gentleman named Bob Ellers, Sr., who thought that there ought to be competition among sales of bonds, and so he was really groundbreaking along with a couple other people here in the, in the metropolitan area, and that spread nationwide, and the idea of a financial advisor who works only for you. And that's one thing I can assure you, Ellers only works for public clients. We don't work for underwriters, we don't work for developers, so we have your best interests at heart. We've now grown to 85 people. We have offices primarily still based here in Minneapolis, but offices in Milwaukee and Chicago, and we just opened an office in Denver, a very exciting metropolitan area, too. We think that those, sometimes it's good to hear about what other states are doing. It helps enhance your opportunities. That's what we can bring to you is not just what's happening in the metropolitan area in the state of Minnesota, but across the country as well. We're a very stable firm. Our president, Steve Afflebacher, has been with the firm since 1979. He's mentioned in the staff report as now being on a significant regulatory body at a national level, the MSRB. I've been with the firm for 20 years, and many of our key staff members have been with the firm for 30 years. And so it's really something that we emphasize as a firm. Everybody who works at the firm for more than a year gets stock. We're an ESOP, and no one person owns more than 20% of the, of the firm. So what an ESOP does, we found in many professional organizations, is provides a nice orderly transfer of ownership so that there's stability in the firm, and we think that's important as well. We're familiar with the city. As City Manager mentioned, we've done some work for the city before. Our firm has represented the school district for a number of years, and I know I've worked with some of you, including the mayor and the city attorney, with Southwest Transit over the years as well, as well as working with a number of your neighbors. So, again, thank you very much for this opportunity to work with you, and, you know, please present us with a number of challenges. It's what we get excited about every day, and don't be afraid to ask a lot of questions, and we will be doing the same of you and your staff as well.
Thank you, Mr. Ruff. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, we're looking for a motion.
I would move to award the contract for financial advisory services to Ellers.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Congratulations. It'll be great to work with you again. The next item is board and commission recruitment process. Mr. Getchow, you're going to go over that with us?
I will. Mayor and Council, I'd like to bring forward our new timeline for recruitment of board and commission candidates and ask you to set a date for the interviews. I think, as you know, citizen engagement is a huge part of Eden Prairie, and, and there's involvement comes at a lot of different levels in our community. It can be simply, you know, attending a meeting, sending an email, calling, being involved. And you can get very involved in the city to a point where you could apply to be on one of our six city commissions. And we have openings each and every year for a number of our commissions because we do have limits to terms, and we do have people that either sometimes move on to a, a city council role potentially, or move on to other commissions or to other activities. So it's always very important, a very important part of our local government, that we have a strong and active board and commission group. So tonight, actually, next week starts the application process, and we advertise that through our city website and newspaper and different formats of communication. For a deadline of applications, that would be on February 6th. The interviews, then, would take place on Tuesday, February 24th. And again, I like to tell potential applicants and applicants that they actually interview with the entire mayor and city council. That's not something you see in each and every community, so that's something that, again, shows your testament to the commitment to our commission members that they're interviewed by the entire city council, and then at a subsequent meeting, and that would be on March 3rd, the council would move to appoint commissioners. And then finally, we have an orientation that we schedule in the evening at the end of March. So the action tonight would be for you to approve the timeline and then set that council meeting date for interviews.
Okay. Councilors, are motion?
I would move to approve the timeline for recruitment of board and commission candidates and set February 24th as the date for commission interviews.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes.
I have one quick question, but do we send out notice to all the people that get our email alerts on various things? Notice of the fact that these are opening and where to go to do it?
We do, and we will. So that will be coming. We have, we have a list of now at least 12,000 residents that want to receive information on the city, and this would be one of those pieces of information we're going to send out. In fact, I didn't mention this, but we've, even though we haven't started the official recruitment process, we have been receiving some applications already because of some of the content that's already on our website.
Do those people need to reapply, then, if they applied last month rather than this month, or...